Okay, we'll call to order this zoning board of adjustment meeting. This welcome to the April 11th meeting of the City of Davenport zoning board of adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of the zoning ordinance for hardship variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Jeff Blumker. Members present today are from left to right, myself and Bridget Boyd Carlson. Staff present are Laura Berkeley, Scott Coops, and Attorney Brian Hyer. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics.
Remember, Blumker, can you mention Dan Darlin?
Oh, yes. And also present by teleconference is Dan Darlin, our normal chair. Again, if you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the chair. The only exception to this standard is that the staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they will be permitted to speak to answer that question. But I'll ask that you keep your response limited to the specific question. So we'll move to our agenda. We'll approve the minutes from the last meeting of December 21st, 2023. Any corrections to the minutes from that meeting? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. By Dan Darlin. All in favor, give us a aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll move on to the first item of business, which is, is there any old business to cover this time, staff? Any members have any old business we need to cover?
No.
Very good. Then we'll move on to new business. First item is a request. HV24-01 of Bray Architects on behalf of Davenport Community Schools at 1414 East Locust Street for a hardship variance to build in addition to the school, which will be approximately 45.3 feet in height. Property zoned R-4C zoning district allows for buildings 35 feet in height or less as required in Table 17.401-17.04-1 Ward 5. Staff want to take it from there?
You want me to talk about three people?
You want to go through all of them?
No, the, since we only have three board members present...
Oh, okay. Yeah, let me stipulate that when we only have three board members present, or at least offer the option to the applicants, this particular applicant, there are only three members present of this five-member board. Approval of any motion requires the unanimous vote of all three members present today. Our bylaws grant the chair the discretion to allow you to request a tabling of this hearing until later date. Once the board hears your item, this opportunity to table will have passed. Applicant, would you like to proceed, or would you like to have the hearing tabled?
Can we proceed, please?
Okay, very good. Applicant has indicated they would like to proceed with three...
And just a point of clarification for everybody listening is, right now, we only have four staff members on the board presently, two here in person and one online. So we're missing one person today.
Okay. Anything else that applicants need to know, staff? So again, do you need me to reread the...
Maybe you could ask ahead for the other two cases that we have as well, if they want to participate.
So, yeah, in line brevity, other applicants here, does everyone kind of understand the option? Everyone is okay with proceeding with your petition?
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so the staff report. This is an older photo, of course. There's Washington School on the right and Sudlow on the left. Washington has been demolished. So again, the request is to build some new phases to Sudlow over time, and those phases will be at approximately 49.3 feet tall. The code for residential R4 allows for a 35-foot-tall building. However, I did find out during my staff report research, and I don't think it made the staff report, but the existing building is with the parapet wall, it is actually 49 feet already. So the proposed changes aren't really going to increase the relative height. So this is the Sudlow from the north. Like, see kind of the new landscaped area they have there, and the buses come in on the left there. This is the elevation from the south, from Sudlow, or from Locust Street, looking at Sudlow. This is looking to the southeast. And again, you can see there's three stories in this photo and the previous photo. The first floor is a little bit below grade, a portion of it. And this is looking from the west, looking east. And here's what they're proposing. Parts of the existing Sudlow are going to remain. And this portion here would be new. These portions, I believe, are the ones that are already there. And so the new portions would be at that 40... 45.3-foot height. This is the elevations. This is a chart that was in your staff report regarding the heights for each section. So again, this summary of just kind of what's required. They're proposing 45.3. The code in residential areas requires 35. Again, as I said in the staff report, the 35-foot is basically set for the primary use of this district, which is single-family and a limited two-family dwelling. So the code does allow quasi-institutional uses, and I don't know that the height limitation really takes that into effect, and so it kind of creates a need for special consideration. This is the notification we did. We sent out 67 notices. We had two phone calls asking questions about what was going on, but verbally no protest and written, we didn't receive any protests. Staff's findings. Item number one, application of the ordinance creating hardship is established. Item number two, physical surroundings imposing hardship is established. Item number three, unique circumstances established. And item number four, protection of essential character is established. Staff recommends approval of HV24-01. And then any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. You said that one part of the building is already taller than the 45.3?
According to the information we have from the developer, yes. This portion here is actually above 45 feet in height.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any concerns issued by the surrounding neighbors, community?
As I said again, we had two phone calls. They basically just had questions on what was happening. Neither one said they were opposed to the request, and we have not received anything in writing, email, or delivered by hand or by mail. Staff did review the setbacks of the structure. I mean, it's a relatively large lot. The setbacks are greater than what is typical in this residential district. And so, given that, I don't think that the additional height imposes any light or air issues for adjacent properties.
Yep. And to summarize the purpose, it was in your staff report, but generally, the purpose of this is to reorganize the school district, and Sudlow wouldn't have an extra grade there. So they're adding on very large improvements. So instead of having two schools there, which were there previously, and an intermediate and an elementary school, it will be one. So overall, I would predict the use is generally the same as it had been with an elementary school and an intermediate school together.
Yeah. Again, no visibility concerns, no environmental. That's all been...
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Dan, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. We'll ask the applicant to step up to the podium and present your request.
So I am Carrie Yulencamp with Bray Architects, and the district has been going through a master planning, which they're at the point now where they would like to add on to their middle schools. And this is where this comes from, is, you know, we're not intending to create different character, to impose upon the surroundings. We're just maximizing the site and reorganizing it so that we can accommodate three-grade levels with the proper amount of classrooms. And there is some demolition, but then we're rebuilding in the same fashion, trying to make sure that we are doing a justice for something that will be longevity of Davenport. The imposing height restriction really does come from the residential section of it, which, you know, typically would not be imposed on a building like this if it were not zoned to that. I guess, are there other questions? Yeah?
Do you want to cover the philosophical layout of the building and how the grades are intentionally separated out? I think that would be helpful.
So the existing building has three stories, and that's what we're proposing. One of the reasons that maintaining three stories will be very beneficial to the school is by having three grade levels, they can really create a house system where each grade level has its own floor. So sixth grade will be on top, which is the most isolated, and as coming into the school, that would be the biggest factor for them. They're going from elementary to a middle school. Middle of the building would be seventh grade, and then the bottom would be eighth grade. And so they're kind of getting ready to move out of the building, right? And so by creating the three levels and maintaining the height of it, they can really create where a safety measurement also, where the kids have a lot greater... They're not moving around as much. They can create little wings that they are calling houses. And it just creates a lot better system for the district moving forward. If we were to not be able to build to the three stories, then two stories, and we'd have to sprawl farther, creating less amenities across the site also, because we would have to take up just more square footage of the site. Mainly, the only part of the building that we are asking for the variance is because the three-story educational... The other parts that we are building are not three stories. So the part closest to you is really their kitchen, their receiving. It'll have mechanical space on top, but shielded. The middle part that's in red is their cafeteria story, which is two stories. And so really, the background is really just the three-story part where they want to create those grade level per floor. And that's where this comes from.
What type of special considerations will need to be deployed when actual construction takes place in terms of, I presume that the school kids will still be attending school in that building during construction?
Yeah, so the whole existing building remains in place. The addition that you can see right here will be built adjacent to it while school is in construction. They're planning on just safeguarding it normally with the general contractor that's awarded it, I'm sure will have safeguards in place. They'll keep the construction to the one side. Where Washington currently is sitting will be a great place for the contractor to have laydown space, have all of their amenities over there fenced in, away from the students. Construction is always hard, right? I mean, it's not going to be easy, but the kids will be safely in the building as existing. And it's not until they move into this new addition that then they would start doing a lot more work in the building.
Any questions from the board? For the applicant?
I just have one. Whether it's for the board or staff, I'm not sure. With it being 10 feet taller than the existing building, is there any marking requirement for consideration for the medevac helicopters coming into Genesis East?
So the existing building is actually taller than the proposed building. We are actually reducing the height with our new addition. And the part that is the tallest actually gets demolished because it's the oldest part of the building. It's from 1912. So we're actually reducing the height of the building overall.
Okay. So comments that say the proposed three-story building will be 10 feet taller than the existing three-story building, but that existing piece will be coming down? Or is this staff comment not...
No, I think when I wrote that, that's before I found out that the existing building was 49 feet tall. And what it's meant to say is it's 10 feet above the allowed height of the district.
Okay, but it's not taller than the existing building?
No.
It is not. With the first level being a little bit underground, it should be very equal to what you already have there. If you were to drive by that part of the building, very much apples to apples. Like, it should not be more imposing than what is already there. It actually will be moving it towards the middle of the site so that you're even bringing the building a little bit off of those corners and kind of centralizing it more as a standalone building.
Thanks for our clarification. I have no other questions.
Anything else? Any other questions from the board? Okay, then we'll move on. Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of the request? Seeing none, we'll ask, does anyone in the audience want to speak in opposition of the request? Okay, hearing none, applicant will ask, do you have any final comments?
I do not.
Very good. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Move on to board discussion. Any comments, concerns from the board?
Personally, I think this is, everything that's proposed is within character, and since the height issue is clear to my brain now, I think we're good to go.
Yeah, I visited the site yesterday, and I can't imagine if there's any, should be any concerns relative to the surrounding area or otherwise. Very good. Then we'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve HV24-01.
Motion to approve by Bridget. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan.
I'll take parole call. Mr. Darlin?
Yes.
And Boyd?
Yes.
And Blumker?
Yes. Very good. Anything else to cover in this matter, staff? Thank you, petitioner. Now we'll move on to item two, that being request SU24-01 of QC Seek Temple at 1501 East 52nd Street for a special use to establish a place of worship on property zoned CT Commercial Transitional as required in Table 17.08-1. May we have the staff report, please?
Okay, Scott Coops, community planning. This site, if you're familiar with, is near 53rd and Eastern. There's the Toyota, smart Toyota on the corner. There's Steel Plow to the north of the site. There's a neighborhood to the south. This is, the property is a little more zoomed in. If you can see, there's significant vegetation barrier along the southern portion of the lot. It's 139 feet at its deepest, or it actually might be a little less than 110 feet, I think. This is the zoning map. It shows where the CT zoning is. Our CT zoning district is a transitional zoning district, and it's intended to buffer the more intense commercial districts like the C3 on the corner from things like the R3 to the south. And because it's a buffer district, and because it doesn't have parking regulations required, there's a special use permit required for a place of worship. This slide shows the site plan. The parking lot exceeds the number of spaces that are required, and each stall and drive, well, each stall is wider and deeper than what's required as well. The rear of the structure is at least 330 feet from the nearest dwelling to the south. Again, there's about 27,000 square feet of wooded area on the rear of the property, and it's, at its deepest, it's 120 feet deep, that buffer is. This slide just shows the site plan a little bit more zoomed in so you can see some more of the detail. So the zoning ordinance in the zoning use matrix, this just shows you where the special use requirement comes into play. And again, the primary issue for staff is that this district does not require parking. And so when we look at the parking calculations, even if it were required, they would only be required to have 10 spaces. They have well over that. And then we did get, after the staff report went out, I did get some information from our traffic division, and they gave us the go-ahead that they don't see any problems for this property, and we have those details if you want me to read the full statement. But we did do our notices to 13 adjacent property owners within 200 feet. We received one comment via email. It was not signed, and that was distributed to the board via email, and it's at the bottom of this slide as well. And if you would like, I could read that to you. The location of that property is basically due south of the point, the further southern point of the lot. And our findings, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use will not endanger the public health or safety or welfare of the city of Davenport. The proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity. And item number three, the special use in the specific location proposed is consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and the adopted land use policies. Staff recommends approval of SU24-01 as proposed. And if the board has questions of staff?
Any questions?
Yeah, this is Dan. Since the one complaint was about traffic, would you mind reading in the traffic division's report?
Yes, I can do that.
If we had it for consideration?
Yep, and this is from Jerry Vandura, and she's Assistant Traffic Engineer Manager. According to the ITE trip generation, the place of worship will generate three to four trips in the peak AM, Monday through Friday, between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, and approximately five trips in the peak PM, Monday through Friday, between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Therefore, the additional trips generated during the weekday are so few that it will not be noticeable, it will not have a noticeable impact on the transportation system. On Sunday, during the peak hour, ITE trip generation says they may generate 100 trips per hour, within about 50 entering and exiting. This is a traditional church. I assume since they are planning for 45 parking spaces, they will not generate as much traffic as a traditional church. Since the existing traffic on Eastern Avenue and East 53rd Street is much less on Sunday than on a weekday, the additional trip generated by this place of worship on a Sunday will have very little impact on the transportation system. And that's the end of this statement.
52nd Street at Davenport?
52nd Street's a loop. It connects to 53rd, and it connects to Eastern.
Okay. What is the, what is the new development going on just down the road?
At the corner of 52nd and 53rd, there's a veterinary clinic being proposed, or built, I should say.
I have a question. So that's Toyota in the right?
Correct.
And they're closed on Sundays, right?
That's my knowledge, yes.
Okay. So...
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll move on. Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of the request? Hearing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in opposition of the request?
Has the applicant presented yet?
No, we haven't had the, I apologize. I've skipped over. Can we have the applicant come up and offer your presentation?
Thank you. My name is Samir Kulkarni. I'm Director of Design at Bush Construction, and I represent the applicant in this case. So Seek Temple of the Quad Cities has been here in, for about, over three decades. So they're just about a mile and a half to west of this lot on 53rd. And the reason they are looking to relocate is the hardship of various other creeks and other things. They are not able to expand, and this seemed to be the most logical lot for them to look at, look at this being the next 25 years of community service that they do. So from a lot standpoint, we intentionally chose a larger lot just so we could have a lot of buffer and a lot of parking and really take care of any neighborhood issues. In this particular case, the lot itself, as you can see, is adequately buffered on the south, which is about, I would say, more than 100 feet. Right now, the building is about more than 100 feet from the lot line on the corner south lot point. And the vegetation and the natural topography, all that should really not affect either the site or the activity of a Seek Temple, and most of their activity is being indoors on a Sunday. So I think the parking is adequate, and they are, they're very, they're typically full only on Sundays within that three or four-hour span. So from a traffic standpoint, I don't see that being a concern on the 52nd Street because it's not literally throwing everything out on 53rd, which is the most, more busier street. So they kind of have options of going either to Eastern or back onto 53rd because this being a loop. So I request that this special zoning use, special use be approved.
Okay, any questions from the board of the petitioner?
No.
Dan, did you have any questions?
Yeah, when we discussed the tree buffer to the south, were those trees just all volunteers, or were those purpose planted there? Do we know?
They're all existing trees. We're just going to maintain that because the land slopes down considerably from the point that you see on the site plan. So they're all existing trees that we're going to leave them as is, not plant any new ones.
Yep.
ones.
I, I don't believe that they were ever, I think they're, to your point, they're natural growth trees. I don't think there was any planned, plantings of, of those trees.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Laura.
Anything else from the board? Okay, now we'll fall back to proper procedure. Any, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none? Anyone want to speak in opposition of this request? Hearing none? Applicant, do you have any final comments?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Move on to board discussion. Any concerns and comments from the board in this matter?
You know, one, one comment, I've, I've been looking it up here while we've been talking as well, but, yeah, car door shuts, it's a, it's actual state, I won't be concerned ordinance or law, but car door shuts cannot be opened on Sunday. So, that's the only day of traffic conflict. It doesn't seem to be an issue.
Again, the-
There was some additional recommendations by staff in the report about those, the trees to the south remaining, and, you know, remaining, kind of why I asked the question. Trees, you know, trees die, so, I don't know if there's a better way to word that, but yeah, we, that we want to keep a, a vegetation buffer. So, if we lose vegetation, will there be a requirement to put in more vegetation? You know, trees die, do they have to plant trees to make up for it? The only question about the recommendation, and then there's two other recommendations that, that seem to, to make sense, and I don't have a question about. So, how do we?
It's up to the, I think it would be up to the board whether you want to stipulate that they be replaced as needed, or since it's not required by the code, there is not really a buffer required. Staff just did want to make sure it wasn't deliberately removed, and there, there are no plans to remove them. And I understand trees may and do die over time. But again, more trees might be coming as well, naturally as well, so.
Sure, sure. Should we just say that it shall be maintained as opposed to shall remain?
That's fine.
Is that, is that, this is up to you, Mark? Okay.
You okay with that, Bridgette?
Yeah, and I apologize, the staff report on the presentation that I'm doing did, did not carry forward those conditions, but they were in the packet. So, that's my fault.
I was out at the site yesterday, and I, I couldn't see that would cause any concerns for the surrounding area. Couldn't see any traffic issues. Seemed like a very appropriate site for, for this, this type of use. Any other board discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for a motion.
All right, I'll motion, let me make a motion here. I'll motion to approve SU twenty-four dash zero one incorporating the three staff recommendations with the edit of the first recommendations stating that the existing trees on the southern portion of the lot shall be maintained to serve as a vegetation, vegetative buffer. The other two I was writing.
Is that, what's the drive of staff, okay?
Yep.
Second.
Second by Bridgette. All those in favor? Give us a yes.
We'll do roll call.
Oh, roll, yes.
Yep, Boyd?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
And Darlin?
Yeah.
And Blumker?
Okay, very good. Thank you, petitioner. So, I presume that took care of items two and three. Is that correct?
That took care of the special use. Now, we have a presentation on the hardship variances, which, if need be, they can be voted on separately, or they could be voted on together.
Okay. Then we move on to item number three. This is request HB twenty-four dash oh-two and oh-three of Bush Construction on behalf of QC Seek Temple at fifteen oh-one East Fifty-second Street for a hardship variance to establish a place of worship on property zoned C-dash-T commercial transitional district with a building over five thousand square feet and setback outside of the zero to twenty foot build-to-zone. This is in Board seven.
Okay, so again, this is a, a use proposed in the CT district, which is kind of a buffer transitional district from heavy commercial uses to residential and other lower intense uses. The, the nature of most of these lots are that they're much smaller, and they're in more, more often, they're traditionally in built-up areas, and so they have smaller lots. This is a, a kind of a unique situation. It's a very large lot. It's on a brand-new subdivided area. And so, given the size of this lot, some of these restrictions don't necessarily make a lot of sense. So, the one requirement that it be, be five thousand square feet or less doesn't really seem to apply to this situation. The proposed building is for ten thousand, three hundred square feet. Or is it two hundred? Yeah, three hundred. And the other requirement of the, the code section, when we did the zoning overhaul and we replaced all the code sections, the CT district along with the C-one district had some build-to zones, where they wanted buildings to address the street in the more pedestrian neighborhoods. This, this is a subdivision, or, I'm sorry, it's a suburban area, and it's not necessarily as suburban or as pedestrian-friendly as where most of these CT uses go. And so, I'll get to our analysis in a minute, but, so the building is technically supposed to be within the first twenty feet south of the property line, and it's exceeding that, it's set back farther. Given the nature of the building that they're proposing, and they want to have a, a walkout in the rear, and it makes sense to have the building where it's at, given that, but I'll get to my analysis here in a second. Again, this is the site shown closer up, and we did our notices, and there was nothing, no comments by phone or by email. The one email we got, I gave you earlier, it didn't specifically state anything regarding hardship variances it stated about the use, so I put that with the other request. The findings, the application of the ordinance creating a hardship is established, the physical surroundings imposing the hardship is established, unique circumstance is established, and protection of essential character is established. And staff recommends approval of both HB twenty-four zero-two and HB twenty-four zero-three. Board questions?
Thank you, staff. Any questions from the board for?
I have a question. So, ten thousand square feet roughly versus five thousand on two and a quarter acres. Scott, do you know by chance what the acreage is of the, the lot fourteen twenty-three to the west?
I do not, no. It's a really irregular shape. It might be somewhat close to this lot, but a lot of it's not usable, because it's so narrow to the west of that lot, the west portion of that lot, and there's some easements on the west side of that lot. But no, I don't know the acreage of the other, the other lot. I would guess it's slightly less.
About one point eight acres.
One point eight.
One point, one point eight is the other lot to the west, the size of that lot.
Do you have a concern, Dan?
Maybe, I don't know. We dumped him. We're still going. Okay.
You still, Dan, are you still there? No? Okay. Any other questions of staff from, from the board?
No, but we can, we can call him on the phone if need be.
So, we need to suspend proceedings until we get him back on?
Just a second. You're trying to dial his cell phone directly?
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or- To enable audio controls, please enter your audio-
Hello?
Great, we got you.
Sorry about that.
Yep, all right.
Can you hear us okay, Dan?
Yep, I got you.
Okay, we'll get back on track here. Was there an issue you wanted to pursue with the question about the, the sidewalk?
Yeah, I, I guess, and I was, was trying to make a supportive point, because the property, yeah, to the west, doesn't look like the building footprint of it is nearly the size of this one. It becomes the way the property drops off. So, the point I was, I guess I was trying to get at by figuring out what the acreage of that was, was that a, maybe it's more for discussion, but, you know, that five thousand foot building on the adjacent property to the west would probably be a tighter fit than ten thousand square foot building on this piece of property. So, that, that part's probably more for the discussion, but I was just trying to get to the, to the size of that, of that lot, that's all. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I think, so, this is Laura, and I think traditionally speaking, I don't, Scott and I have talked about this, and it may have been in the staff report, I don't think the regulations associated with the CT district were specifically outlined for a, a place of worship. I, I think really, when they, the regulations were written, it was to think about office space, and it would be, as Scott said, more, more in infill areas where you already have existing structures on the same streets to keep the same massing of, of those types of buildings. So, we don't necessarily have that in this case. Also, generally speaking, places of worship are allowed by right in residential districts with no size restrictions. So, if this had happened to be a residential district, it would be able to be built up at the size without a hardship variance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board of staff?
No.
Hearing none, we'll ask the applicant to step to the podium and, and address this particular request.
Thank you. Again, my name is Samir Kulkarni. I'm Director of Design at Bush Construction. So, the, the two hardship variances that we are talking about are, are really something that we feel that this particular project cannot afford to comply with, just because of the fact that the building itself needs to be about, about ten thousand square feet. It's got a prayer area, it's got a dining area, so all of that put together, we cannot split the building into two parts, and it becomes very inconvenient for the community to, to use this facility, and we're looking at this getting bigger and bigger. So, we feel the five thousand square feet will put substantial hardship, so we request for that variance. And then, the twenty-foot setback is, is also going to be challenging, except, purely for the fact that we need some, this is going to be a large enough building that you need some foreground from the street, so it, it, it feels like we, we will be losing a lot of the drop-off area. Most of the frontage will be taken on by drop-off area, and all the parking goes back. So, this is also not a very, you know, desirable situation, when everybody wants to be up in the front, and I, I think that is another reason I would like to make here for that hardship variance to be allowed.
To reiterate what the petitioner has said, due to the topography, it makes more sense to have the flatter area be the parking area in the front, and it actually may be more beneficial to the neighbors, to the south, to have the building there instead of the vehicles, which may, the vehicles may, may be more of the nuisance component with the noise and headlights and things like that, so it actually is kind of shielding that neighborhood a little bit more. And with the, the overflow parking lot for Smart Toyota to the east as well, you, you already have the parking lot in line with what they're requesting for their parking lot.
Also, the safety and privacy of, of place of worship to be considered when you have that setback.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions from the board of the petitioner?
No.
Dan, any questions to the petitioner? Very good, then we'll move on. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of the request? Hearing none? Anyone in the audience want to speak in opposition of the request? Hearing none? Applicant, do you have any final comments in this matter?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up the board discussion. Comments, concerns by the board? It's pretty well covered.
Um, yeah, I really don't have any, anything additional. I guess trying to get to the, the point of asking the question, a, we're covered the size restriction, intense, but also, I think, I think given the size of the property from a, from a ratio point, I, I think it's, I think it fits well, and the setback makes sense. I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, very good. I'll ask for a motion.
Staff would ask, unless you feel necessary, I would, I would request that we do one motion for both hardship variances at the same time.
Okay. Again, staff is, is asking for a, a motion to cover both hardship variances. Does, does the board have any problem with that?
Motion to approve HB twenty-four dash oh-two and HB twenty-four dash oh-three.
Motion by Bridgette, second?
Second.
Second by Dan.
And roll call, Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Dan Darlin?
Yeah.
And Blumker?
Yes. Very good, thanks. Thanks again, petitioner.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item number four. Request SU twenty-four dash oh-two of Christopher Kets at fifteen twenty-seven Brady Street for a special use to establish a bed and breakfast on property zoned C-dash-T commercial transitional district as required by table seventeen dot zero eight dash one. This is in Board five. Staff?
Scott Cope, CED, or Community Planning and Zoning out at Public Works. I'm a few years behind. I don't know if you anywhere familiar with this property at the corner of Brady and Kirkwood, but it's been owned by, not St. Ambrose, but Palmer for St. Ambrose, that's right, for a long time now. They've had function- They've had functions very similar to what they're proposing in this use now, today. The code was recently changed because we noticed there was an oversight that if you did have a residentially-built structure, but if it was in the CT, it wouldn't allow for a bed and breakfast, which is kind of silly when they're allowed in the residential districts. So, we fixed that, and we have a request today for a bed and breakfast at this CT location. It is built as a house, it is a large house, it is a grand house, and I think the, the use is going to be making good, good use for the space. Here's the zoning map, and here's the site plan, which shows the rear parking spaces. There's 15 spaces back in the alley. They're able to use off-street parking on Kirkwood as well. So, this use has a principal use standard, so every use in the zoning code could have a principal use standard, some don't, some do. This one does. Basically, the principal use standard is a way for us to highlight things that we want the use to meet, and it's kind of like a built-in checklist for things that it should have. And staff reviewed the requirements for the special use, or standards, and they, they meet those standards or will, or will meet those standards. Number one, the exterior of a bed and breakfast must maintain the original appearance as a single-family dwelling, and it will. Cooking equipment is prohibited in guest rooms. They're, they do not have plans for that. No retail sales are permitted, except for ancillary retail items such as souvenirs, et cetera. There's no major retail proposed. And they're not going to operate as a restaurant. Number five, the sign, one sign is permitted, and they are not going to exceed what the code allows there. So as proposed, or how it's going to operate, it will meet these requirements. We sent out 15 notices, we did not receive anything. Oh, and we did have a letter of support, that's right. Thank you for reminding me. I think so much of adjacent neighbors, but, so we did receive a letter of support, and it was in the packet from the Hilltop Association, and they, they are in favor of the request. Our findings, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use will not endanger the public health or safety or welfare. Number two, the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use at adjacent properties. Number three, the special use is in specific, in this specific location is consistent with the spirit intent of this ordinance and adapted land use policies. In many resests, in many senses, this is almost a perfect site for a bed and breakfast. Our recommendation does have three conditions. One, if there should be, be a problem with neighborhood parking, or if complaints arise, or the streets are too tight, or if should parking be removed on Kirkwood, staff would just like the, the right to reserve to have some adjacent parking agreements, should that be necessary. Number two, all building codes shall be met. This will be met right now, and they do have sprinklers in there, but I kind of put that in there because sprinklers are required for a bed and breakfast. And number three, all principal use standards that we just discussed, they shall be met while in operation. I just wanted to put that in as a new condition that I didn't have in the actual packet that went out, but I'd just like to reiterate that those conditions, while they appear met at this time, we would, they would need to be in conformance during the operation as well. And questions from the board?
Any questions from the board for staff?
Yeah, is this, is this now going to be a privately-held bed and breakfast as opposed to the, the foundation or whoever had it from St. Ambrose?
That is correct. The applicant?
Yep, there was a sale to some individuals that actually live in the area and are doing some restoration work on, on the, the building currently, so it, it's no longer owned by St. Ambrose or any association with this, with the institution.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know, what's the maximum occupancy with the proposed setup?
The petitioner is here, so...
Oh, okay, well, I'll save, yep. Any other questions of, of staff by the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll ask the applicant to please step up to the podium and present the request.
Hello, I am Chris Kreutz, owner, operator of what we're calling the Hilltop Inn of Davenport, formerly St. Ambrose Alumni House, formerly the Bishop's House Inn, or the Bishop's Inn, I think. It was a bed and breakfast when St. Ambrose bought it, I'm not sure, 20, 30 years ago, something like that. They actually ran it a couple of years as a B&amp;B, and before they converted to offices and special event stuff. As Laura stated, we're currently doing a lot of restoration and historical preservation to both the interior and exterior. And right now, the interior is fully functional. We have six, six bedrooms, and can sleep up to 14 people if needed, from full to king, king beds. And four of those bedrooms have their own bathroom, and then two bedrooms would have a shared bathroom, so. Other than that, just aside from a B&amp;B, hoping to get some special events, off-site, business retreats type thing, possibly. But moving forward, yeah, sooner the better to get, get some things rented out. But other than that, yeah, we, we purchased this just because it, it kind of fell in our lap. We previously purchased a home from Ambrose and redid that, and they liked it so much they approached us when they wanted to sell this one, so. Loving historic, historic houses and being a historic house nut myself, we jumped at it, so. That's where we are.
Thank you. Any questions from the board of the petitioner? Dan, you have anything?
No, nothing for me, thanks.
Bridgette? So again, what's the, what's the, what would be the maximum occupancy? And if you were to...
It will, it can sleep up to 14. As far as, uh, special event stuff, we'll have to see what that comes out to, but I'm guessing it'll, it'll be between 50 and 75, if, if you have like a small wedding or rehearsal dinner or something like that.
What do you guess you had in there for the Hilltop Campus Village event a couple weeks ago?
50 to 60?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Your floor list by rooms, so the TBD rooms on the third floor, are those not going to be guest rooms?
Not yet, no. Right now, it's all set up with cubicles and, and office furniture, and we're looking at either renting that out separately or using that for our own use.
Okay. So would the, would the occupancy change if you were to make those?
Overall, as far as how many people you can fit in a building, you know, I'm, I'm sure that that would be part of it, but as far as sleeping arrangements, you know, the bed and breakfast part, that would be totally locked off and separate.
Okay.
So it would not be, yeah. Two of the offices could technically be converted into bedrooms, but they were at one time. When it was a bed and breakfast 30 years ago, the third floor was where the owners lived, and kitchen, bathrooms, and everything out there, and bedrooms. But we don't plan on, on renting that out that way.
Hey, I have a question or, or comment now. It's probably more toward staff, so, Charlie, outside of this request, but the actual occupancy for events, that'd be set forth by fire marshal code, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and the building code would need to be met, yep.
Yeah, and it, since it's already sprinklered, that should not be a large concern.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll ask, does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none, we'll ask, does anyone in the audience want to speak in opposition to this request? Very good. Applicant, do you have any final comments?
I do not.
Thank you so much. Move to board discussion in this matter? Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, personally, so this is a neighborhood I grew up in, just a couple blocks east on Kirkwood from this location, and so I'm happy to see it being restored. I also love historic homes, so I think they've met all the requirements, so, that was a personal comment, but as far as our strict enforcement of the code, I think it meets all the requirements, and, and I would, I would support this with the three staff conditions.
Yeah, I, I attended the Hilltop Campus Village event a few weeks ago, and it're just, just a really neat old, old home, and, and that deserves to be saved and maintained. And so this, I, I feel like this is a real gift to the community, and just, just can't see really any concerns with it as long as it's, it meets the, the various conditions by the fire marshal, et cetera. Any other, any other comments from the board, any other discussions in this matter?
No.
I'll ask for a motion.
I'll motion to approve Special Use 24-02 with, with the three conditions set forth. Yeah, she doesn't have a say-so. With the three conditions set forth by staff.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Bridgette.
Roll call, Darlin?
Yes.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
And Blumker?
Yes. Thank you, petitioner.
Thank you.
Any other business staff consider? Any other, any other concerns from the board?
We do have a fairly full agenda next time, just as a heads up.
Anything else from the board for the good of the order? Hearing none, then we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Bridgette, second by, by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time today.